Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie or Wendy. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Bray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Blad.
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would please remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Pastor Star Raridan representing the First Congressional United Church of Christ. Congregation of Christ, thank you. Roger.
Sorry Pastor.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening friends. If you would just quiet your mind in whatever way feels appropriate to you. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Yeshua, Abba, Adonai, Allah, Creator, Spirit. We ask your blessings on these people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and we work and we play. Lord, please bless Brad and Chris and Claudia and Roger and Josh and Linda and Rick. Help them as leaders to not ask first, how do we fix this? But rather to pause and reflect and ask, what do we need to learn? How might we change? And to whom shall we listen? Lay on their hearts that they are not only the leaders but the servants of these people and this common good. We remember that here in Pocatello, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor. And we live out the divine command to love our neighbor even if they look different or love different, live different than we do. Remember us, oh Lord, to care for the least of these, the hungry and the homeless, those reintegrating back into our fold, the children, the elderly, the poor in spirit and also in pocket, the stranger, the immigrant, the student, those who live in the margins, and those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Grant us wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and all of us speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice and by the spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 3 as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings, clarification in regular council meetings of February 3, 2022. B, Community Development Block Grand Advisory Committee. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointments of Kalen Bilanco and Doyle Livingston to serve as members of the CDVG Advisory Committee, replacing Brenda Pollard and Stephanie Heaton, whose terms expired. All terms will begin March 4, 2022 and will expire January 1, 2024. C, Childcare Advisory Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Elizabeth Merkley to serve as a member of the Childcare Advisory Committee, replacing Heather Kemp, whose term expired. Elizabeth's term will begin March 4, 2022 and will expire March 4, 2026. D, Council Decision, South Cliffs Industrial Park Final Platte. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a final plat for South Cliffs Industrial Park, which divides approximately 11.53 acres of land into 13 lots. The property is located within a light industrial LI zoning district and will be accessed from the extension of Cliffs Drive. E, Council Decision, Parkside Townhouses Division 2 Final Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a final plat from Parkside Townhouses Division 2, which subdivides approximately 8.67 acres of land into 57 lots, 56 townhome lots and one lot being utilized for stormwater retention. The property is located within a residential high-density RH zoning district and will be accessed from extensions of South First Avenue and Stansberry Street. F, Council Decision, Portnif Golf Estates 2 Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a short plat for Portnif Golf Estates 2, which subdivides approximately 0.66 acres of land located at the easternmost edge of Wedgeway on one lot, subject to conditions. G, Council Decision, Riverside Heights Short Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a short plat for Riverside Heights, which subdivides approximately 2.65 acres of land west of Bannock Highway and south of Hawke Street into four lots, subject to conditions. H, Council Decision, Vacation and Abandonment of Shared Access Utility Easement. Council may wish to adopt its decision to vacate and abandon the public's interest in the existing shared access and utility easements crossing lots 1 and 2, Block 1, 14th Hole subdivision. I, Council Decision, Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment of approximately 66.04 acres of land located east of I-15 and west of the Portnif Wellness Complex. Council may wish to adopt its decision to approve the request by the city of Pocatello to amend the comprehensive map designation approximately 12.03 acres of land as employment and 54.01 acres to be designated as mixed use. J, Child Passenger Safety Annual Grant Request, Police Department. Council may wish to approve a request by the police department to apply for Idaho Transportation Department ITD FY 2022 Idaho Child Passenger Safety Grant in the amount of $15,835. And if awarded, allow acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all related documents subject to legal department review. K, Material Claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the month of February 2022. As a reminder, Councilmember Bray has asked for that to be pulled off of the consent agenda. Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Agenda Item Number 3, the consent agenda items A through J.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item K, Material Claims, has been pulled. Councilman Bray asked for it to be pulled, so I'll give Bray a few minutes.
First of all, this isn't the stuff I was asking for at the last meeting. I was asking for a more detailed report than this. Also, it's apparent that some of this was available on the 9th of February and we got it tonight. And some of it was available after the 28th of February and we got it tonight. It's my position that we have two essential duties as fiduciary officers. One is to budget, the one is to make sure all the expenses correlate to that budget. When we get these this late, it's hard to review the correlation. And I'm simply asking that we work harder to get better reports to us so we can make sure the correlation is occurring.
Okay, so let me explain this packet because we're changing, because the council's been asking for a change and for better an understanding. So what the council asked for was to be able to make sure that you had the information beforehand. So half of this packet, I believe it's split in half if you look at it, half of the packet, the back half, if you look at it, Prepared 3, 2, 22, those are bills that we are approving today and stuff. These are the, is the front half was the stuff that, the information that you had asked for before, as we understood your request, that you had asked for. And so we have changed the way we're going to be doing material claims. You should see material claims twice a month opposed to once a month, and so that should make it easier and help you with that.
I appreciate that, Mayor, but I do need, I do need more detail. I want us to use the forms that we got in July and August. Those are the more detailed forms that we were requesting. And if you want to go back, I can bring those forms in if you need to, to say the example.
So I would appreciate that because these are the forms and the spreadsheets that were prepared back at that point, and so.
No, they're not, they're not what we received.
This is what our, I guess what I'm saying is this is what our finance department has found those forms to be, and so that's why you're getting these, and so.
And I have a question because I have repeated, I can't go through all of this when I literally get it five minutes before a meeting starts. I mean, it's not humanly possible. And, you know, I don't know what language to use to respectfully request again that we get this, I mean, you know, Wednesday morning before a council meeting because it's, it's not about putting it on a desk in front of me five minutes before the bell rings. That's not the point of this.
Okay, in just a minute, Councilmember Mansfield has a comment, but if you look Prepared 3, 2, what's today, 3, 3?
3, 4.
This was Prepared 3, 2, and because that's when we prepare the checks, so that the checks are available, so that if you would like to look at them, we, the checks are available. And so this, this is physically not possible to have that done on Wednesday before, and so that's why this report has always come out on Thursday. It's, we've never seen it beforehand, and so, so just as a physical time standard, that's, that's kind of where we are with that. So Josh, go ahead.
Yeah. Connie, is this the information that you emailed us, emailed to us early this afternoon? Okay, so we had this sometime early this afternoon. Okay, thank you.
However.
And I get earlier would be better, but given the limitations and that we did receive the email, it wasn't five minutes before council.
Well, it was because at least I have other activities that I do in my life and I'm not always available to sit at my iPad hoping and looking and wondering if something is going to come from the city. And, and I don't think it's unreasonable to get some kind of a system in place. We, we did have that. We used to get detailed information much farther in advance. If that's not possible, then I, somebody help me understand, help me understand and help the public understand, why is that not possible?
I think that I just explained, it's not possible to do it the day before because the checks were just printed yesterday afternoon so that we could get that. Then they've got to double check it, and then they go back into the system after that so that they can prepare this because the system doesn't automatically generate this report. And this report, if it's a different one, I would like to see those pages because this report is what I remember seeing. But if it's the, if it's a different one, then maybe it's a different one. And historically, you've always received these on a Thursday afternoon.
So.
When, when these started to come, so.
Mayor, I would interject, historically, we had a CFO that had been here for years. We had a CFO that was part of that experience that followed. And it's more incumbent upon us than ever to fill in, to do the double checking that the CFO used to do as council. We had a hard place right now, and I understand that, but that, that makes it incumbent on us to raise our game.
So hence the twice a month, and I think that'll, that'll help us. That's something I think there was a good, good change in, and so I think that'll help us. Councilmember, or President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I understand the degree. If Mr. Bray would like to bring those reports in, you can look at those and decide if there's additional information needed. At this point, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number K.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mansfield, and I heard an excuse me.
Yeah, if we're going to do these twice a month and I'm going to get them that afternoon, I'm telling you, I'm not going to be able to vote because I'm not going to have enough time to review. I'm kind of surprised that none of you guys are concerned about not being able to review any of this.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm not, I'm not done. I'm still, I'm talking. I'm looking at Rick. I'm, I mean, you're not, you don't seem to be concerned, Josh, Linda, that you don't get to review any of this stuff? Where are the checks and balances?
I read every page of it between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock.
I check my email at 4:00 o'clock before council meeting every month, every week, so that I can read my emails.
Okay, well, if I don't get this before Thursday, I'm not going to be voting for any material claims.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Linda?
The other comment that I would make, I mean, I was able to read it as well, so I'm comfortable with it, but all of these charges are things that we have discussed at several points beforehand when we do budget development, when things come before us in the bidding process, in the contract approval process. So to me, these are not surprises or things that we don't know about.
Well, I'm curious about the $45,000 invoice that I mentioned last week for Conrad Bischoff. Where is that in this report? What page is that?
Okay, just, I'm not sure where it is, but I'm going to ask Tom Kirkman to come up and speak to that because that was complete and utter misrepresentation of.
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. The Conrad Bischoff email occurred, they sent us an email and said that the city owed him $45,000 that they hadn't been paid since August or December. There was a very extensive email discussion between our procurement office and Conrad Bischoff, and it was, in those emails, it was described that that was a Conrad Bischoff mistake that we had found. They sent the invoice to a wrong, wrong agency, and so they were expecting money, but they hadn't sent it because we had balance sheet and we had all of our invoices, and that was, that was a total mistake on their part.
So we were not in arrears?
So.
We were, we were.
We were, but not because we didn't pay the bill.
Not because of us.
Got it.
It was 100% on their end.
It was 100% on their.
Thank you.
It was just an oversight there.
So we have a motion of, now we have a motion.
I have one more point of discussion.
One more, and then we got to move on.
So I appreciate Councilwoman Lurick's statement, however, as has been stated by the councilwoman and very recently by Councilman Mansfield, we actually, in essence, don't pre-approve these. We, we do in our budget process, but Mayor, as you've pointed out several times, once we give, once the, a department gets their budget, they're free to use it as they choose. You have said that anything different than that has been characterized as micromanaging. So in fact, although in my past experience, absolutely, a budget is in essence a financial contract. A department comes in, says this is what I need, this is what I need it for, and that money is given to that department to use in that manner. And if they wish to choose, to change, shift between light items, et cetera, et cetera, that that requires a process, which does not, should be part of the backstage checks and balances in the finance department. That is not the case here because when you go through city budgets, you'll see clothing bought out of phone line items, and so there's, there, that does, those kinds of checks and balances don't exist in our current system. So we, we actually don't pre-approve these and then have the checks and balances in place that guarantee that the money is actually used the way it was appropriated.
Let me explain then to the public the process that we go through for every dollar that we spend. I think that's an important piece. When our budgeting process starts, we have a discussion on the budget and what happens and what we'll spend money on. So that's the first time we've talked about the dollar. And then the commute, then for, you know, most purchases, not all, most purchases, the department comes in front of the council and says, this is what we're looking to do, this is what the estimate is, and this is what it is. We typically get that in a, in a study session, oftentimes we get it here, but, but that's a second time. And then they ask for approval of a contract of some sort in your larger items, and then we look at this, at this level to pay, to approve the payment of it. So literally, in my mind, we talk about the same dollar four different times.
Only if it's, only if it's more than $50,000.
And so that being said, I understand that we've got some checks and balances that you're interested in, and we're working on that, we're trying to get what you've asked for, and we split it in twi, two now so that we can, that it's easier. We're getting it, the report to you as quickly as we possibly can. And so at some point, we just need to move on and continue to do this, and then we'll, we can go from there. So we have a motion by Council President Cheatham. We have a second by Mansfield. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 4 as Proclamations. We have three proclamations tonight. Let me find my stuff. Three proclamations. The first proclamation will be Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day. Councilwoman Lurick will read that. The second will be National Nutrition Month. Councilmember Mansfield will read that, and then the third one will be, will be March for Meals Month, and Councilmember Bray will read that.
Okay. Whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists are the food and nutrition experts who can translate the science of nutrition into practical solutions for healthy living, and whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists have degrees in nutrition, dietetics, public health or a related field from well-respected accredited colleges and universities, completed an internship and passed an examination. And whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists use their nutrition expertise to help individuals make unique positive lifestyle changes, and whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists work throughout the community in hospitals, schools, public health clinics, nursing homes, fitness centers, food management, food industry, universities, research and private practice. And whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists are advocates for advancing the nutritional status of Americans and people around the world. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the city of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 9, 2022, to be Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day in Pocatello, Idaho, and encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of Registered Dietitian Nutritionists and express appreciation for their commitment to promoting science-based nutrition in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow.
Somebody's got to be picking it up.
Yeah.
It always makes me nervous that you're not going to show up.
Dietitian Nutritionist is $5.
If you'd like to say a few things about it, you would welcome.
So my name is Dennis, and I'm an ICU dietetic intern. I'm here on the behalf of the Pocatello dietitians, and I want to thank them for letting me be here, having the opportunity to speak tonight. And that's Jen Reader, she's the president of the Pocatello dietitians. So I just want to, and I also want to thank Mayor Brian Blad and the city, Pocatello city, for recognizing the National Nutrition Month and also the Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day. So I just want to say, what is exactly is a registered dietitian and what exactly do they do? So a registered dietitian, they have graduated with a bachelor's degree, they have completed internship, a minimum of 1,200 hours, and also passed a national exam. They work in many types of settings such as hospitals, some work in WIC, some work in school districts, and some even have their own private practice. And you've probably heard of a nutritionist, and a nutritionist is not the same thing as a registered dietitian. A nutritionist does not have the same credentials as a registered dietitian. They cannot provide medical nutrition therapy like a registered dietitian would. Registered dietitians, they provide medical nutrition therapy to help treat and manage chronic diseases such as like diabetes, heart diseases and obesity. And nutrition is vital in preventing most chronic diseases, and Registered Dietitians play an important role in improving the health, nutrition and overall quality of life. And to give you like an idea, there are over 200 dietitians here in this area, and we want to thank them because they do such a great job at, in involving the community with nutrition. And yeah, happy natural nutrition day.
Thank you. Looks like you're going to get this next one too.
Would you want longer?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Yes. Are you going to stay right here or are you going to go over there and make me wonder if you're going to come back up?
Whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained, and whereas the type, quality and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness, and whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education and a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices. Now I therefore, now therefore I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of City Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 to be National Nutrition Month in Pocatello, Idaho, and encourage all citizens to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow.
Oh, back up. Maybe you could say more if you would like to.
Um, yeah, I don't know if there's anything else. But.
Thank you. All right, let's do it.
Oh, nice.
I'll hand to this, and we'll, this is, this is genuine, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older American Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the month, the March for Meals campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older American Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home delivery, and to raise awareness of the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2022 observance of March for Meals provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Pocatello are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also provide caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Pocatello provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the city that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalization and/or premature institutionalization, and provide a powerful socialization opportunity for seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs deserve recognition for the contribution they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state and our nation. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of Pocatello, proclaims the month of March 2022 to be March for Meals Month in Pocatello, and encourages all citizens to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition and involvement in the National 2022 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Do you want to picture too?
Yes, please.
Take off your mask.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to say something.
I don't have too much to say, just, I mostly just wanted to thank the City of Pocatello and the city council members for all of your support over the years. It definitely helps us fill a much-needed need in our community. And thank you for the proclamation, for the March For Meals. If anybody's ever interested in ride-alongs, Mayor is gonna go with me in, I think, two weeks for a ride-along. If anybody else is ever interested, I would love to show you what we're facing each and every day in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add something? I know this is the fiftieth anniversary of the Senior Nutrition Program, and the Senior Center is holding a special event to commemorate that on March sixteenth from eleven to one. If anyone would like to attend that event and help to celebrate what's happening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On March tenth, nine a.m., will be a city council work session. Directly following the work session will be a special city council meeting. On March seventeenth, two p.m., city council liaison work session clarification meeting. At five thirty, at five thirty p.m., city council clarification meeting, and at six p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. Upcoming meetings and events, the annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries begins March twenty-eighth. Crews will be removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera. They have placed on cemetery spaces if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through April. Please note, in accordance with President Biden's executive order, all individuals must wear face coverings while at Pocatello Regional Airport and on Pocatello Regional Transit. Okay, we will move to Agenda Item Six is a public hearing, annexation of forty-five point nine-four acres east of I fifteen. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Brian Ball, representing McCormick Ranch LLC, to annex in zone fifty-four, fifty, forty-five point nine-four acres, more or less, of land located east of I fifteen, south of Venture Way, and west of Portnife Wellness Complex. The proposed zoning is office park, OP, and residential, commercial, professional. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, this is a, they need to know if there's been any ex parte communication or contact in regards to this. Okay? Brian? Oh. You don't look like Brian.
I'm not, sorry about that. Sean O'Brien with R M E S, representing McCormick Ranch for this annexation request. So previously, these lands were part of the City of Chubbuck. Between the discussions with the City of Chubbuck and McCormick Ranch, it was determined that extending public utilities such as water and sewer would be astronomically expensive and unfeasible to develop these properties. So they decided it would be in everybody's best interest to remove the land from the City of Chubbuck, placing it into the county, and then follow that up with an annexation request to put it into the City of Pocatello. So that's essentially why we're here today. There was a little bit of some comprehensive plan map amendments that needed to be done because these lands weren't given a comprehensive plan map amendment for the City of Pocatello because they were in the City of Chubbuck. All of that has been wrapped up, and we are moving forward with this annexation request. This annexation request is being done with three separate entities, Idaho Power Company, Teton Communications, and McCormick Ranch. The Idaho Power and the half acre owned by Teton Communications are requesting an office park designation with the remaining of, the remainder of the land being requested residential, commercial, and professional zoning. We're looking forward to getting some of these properties developed, and we ask that you approve this annexation. If there's any questions, I'll be having to answer.
I have a question right here. Yeah. In our consent agenda number I, I think it was, it appears that we approved sixty-six point four acres, and this request is only for forty-five acres, I believe.
That is true.
What happened to the rest of it?
The other remaining land is to the south, owned by J-Maxx Holdings, and they do not request annexation at this time.
Okay, so we got the park, so to speak, zoned, but you are representing specific owners.
McCormick Ranch.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm curious if there's any timetable for development yet?
I am not aware of anything. We're making sure we get all of our ducks in a row and, and can proceed with development under the guidelines. Assuming this is going to be approved, we're going to be developing under City of Pocatello guidelines. If not, we will be doing county guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. As noted in the Agenda Item, Brian Ball representing McCormick Ranch LLC, Jeff Mafuccio representing Idaho Power Company, and Tony Hafla representing Teton Communications, Inc., has submitted an application to annex in zone forty-five point nine-four acres, more or less, of land located east of Interstate Fifteen, south of Venture Way, and west of the Portnife Wellness Complex. A public hearing was held before the Plan and Zoning Commission on the evening of February ninth, twenty twenty-two. Based on information provided by the applicant city staff and the location, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the application from those entities in question and located, the property located east of Interstate Fifteen, south of Venture Way, and west of the Portnife Wellness Complex to be zoned office park and residential, commercial, professional. A copy of the commission's findings are provided in your packets. Please note that no written correspondence has been received by staff. Staff recommends adoption of the commission's findings effect with the conditions attached. And this concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt before he steps back? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, has there been any correspondence to, in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Jeff Mafuccio with Idaho Power, address is twelve twenty-one, West Idaho Street, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-zero-two. A couple, couple slides in y'all's packet, but basically Idaho Power, when the comprehensive plan was being, or this property was being de-annexed out of Chubbuck and annexed into Pocatello, proposed to be, Idaho Power was pursuing property on the corner of Fairgrounds Road and Venture Way. That was to allow us to be able to have some future use with I fifteen. Overpass changing, our, our entrance into our Highland Station there on this, on this map was gonna be basically removed, so we had to find an alternative location for access. Along with that, we, we felt like this property would allow us some future growth as this area grows for our substation, as well as any other future needs Idaho Power has. So we are requesting the office park in lieu of a light industrial zone, as we feel that would be most compatible with the RCP and the surrounding area, because we, we do want to secure this for future needs to serve our customers, serve the City of Pocatello and the surrounding area. And so we, you know, again, through this two-page documentation, we believe, you know, Idaho Power can safely and effectively serve our customers with this office park designation. Thank you, and happy to.
Thank you.
May we ask questions?
Sure, go ahead. You can ask your question.
Does Idaho Power have plans to do more than just put a substation there, then? Is there anything developed at this point?
Right now, the substation is our, our primary focus, but we, we have looked at it where we could have a, I guess, like a warehouse-type facility, where we could store some, some, some poles, other types of apparatus. Supply, supply chain's a big issue now for us. We have to order transformers four years ahead of time, and whether that's to replace them, or as the area grows, you know, so this would be another, another opportunity for us to have facilities available where we can't store them at our downtown office, right? So with that, you know, I know we'd have to go back through Planning and Zoning Department, and, and especially one to have anything side obscuring. So nothing is definite, but I could see something happening in the next couple of years.
Do you think it might replace the downtown facility eventually?
I don't believe it will.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, you got me on a weak point, and I wasn't supposed to let you ask him questions.
Oh.
He just shows support for it.
Well, we are a party to the application.
Yeah, that's true.
This was his testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay, you don't know, Sean, if you want to come back up here and say anything, you, then I declare this public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilmember Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Six, annexation of forty-five point nine-four acres east of I fifteen, subject to the conditions that have been placed.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, Public Hearing, Annexation of eighteen point six-nine acres north of Vista Drive. This time has been set aside to hear comments from the public concerning a request by Bill Isley to annex in zone eighteen point six-nine acres, more or less, of land located north of Vista Drive. The proposed zoning for the property is residential, medium-density, single-family with a concurrent comprehensive plan land use designation of residential R. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any ex parte communication in regards to Agenda Item Seven?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Bill? Who's speaking? Sean? Bill? Oh, not Sean. Thought you were looking at Sean.
Bill Isley, four-four, four-seventy-seven, La Valley Strada, Pocatello, Idaho. This is part of the high terrace development that we're doing across the top of Center Street, from Center Street down into Montevista. It also kind of connects with a development called East Side Surprise that'll go on down past the old Alameda Water Tank and connect to Beth, I believe it's Beth, that comes along the freeway there. This particular piece, we could have zoned it a little bit higher, but there was either one or two lots that barely slipped over into the less than seventy-five-hundred square feet. So we just went with this zoning classification. The plan would actually allow a hundred and sixty lots, and then even with the mule deer component, it'd still end up at eighty-one, and we're at thirty. So it will be a really nice extension, and it'll get us one close, one step closer to connecting roads. Now, the best road that we can connect is Vista to Center going south, but we can't connect that one yet. That's gonna take a little while. So we're going down this way, and we have every hope and expectation that within three years, there will be one or the other will be connected. So there's two ways in, and with five years, both, and then we'll have three ways in.
Perfect. Any questions for Bill?
Same question as before. What's your timetable, Bill? How soon do you think you'll start building in this area?
Well, going up, the extension of Vista up to Center Street is, is completed up to Center, and they got frozen out for putting the four hundred feet of Center along the top that was part of our first phase. That'll be done first thing this spring. We're gonna start building the houses and selling lots probably in the next forty-five or sixty days. This particular development will get built this summer, and then we'll move on to it. Going south, we're just getting the master plan finalized. It's been kind of a long process because Mitch is fighting his battle, and so we, we don't have that engineering into it, but we've made progress on it. The master plan going the other direction should be finished in the next week to ten days. We're also gonna put the first phase of that development in. So we will be able to go from Vista to where we can probably put a gravel temporary road to connect to Beth, so that we do have that emergency second way in within, within three years maximum.
Cool. Thank you.
Pretty exciting to see his whole concept out there, and so I can't wait to see it in the next five years.
Thank you for what you're doing for our community, Bill.
We'll get there.
We'll get there. Thank you. Staff.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner. As noted in the agenda, Bill Isley represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying has submitted an application to annex in zone eighteen point six-nine acres, more or less, of land located north of Vista Drive. The proposed zoning for the property is residential, medium-density, single-family, and a concurrent comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential. A public hearing was held before the Plan and Zoning Commission on the evening of February ninth, twenty twenty-two. Based on information provided by the applicant city staff and the location, the Plan and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the application from Mr. Isley. A copy of the commission's findings are provided in your packets. Again, please note that no written correspondence has been received by staff. Staff recommends adoption of the commission's findings with the conditions attached. This concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Questions for Matt? Thank you. Madam Clerk, any correspondence in your office? Thank you. And I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Bill, do you want to come argue with yourself?
You can take the other side.
I know. That's right. Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you. No, don't have him do that. He'll convince some of you the other way. He's, he's good at convincing people. So with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? Mr. Mayor? Hey, Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the annexation of eighteen point six-nine acres north of Vista Drive, subject to all standards and conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Super. Thank you. I would move to Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearing, Zoning Map Amendment to six hundred Jefferson Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Dakota, by Dakota World for a zone map amendment, rezone approximately three point zero five acres of property from residential, medium-density, single-family RMS to residential, commercial, professional, RCP. The subject property is located at six hundred Jefferson Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any ex parte communication in regards to Agenda Item Eight?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you. I'm here today to request a rezone on the six hundred block of Jefferson. There are four parcels there currently zoned RMS residential uses. This property is currently something akin to a gravel pit. It's surrounded by commercial and high-density residential uses on all sides. It's been excavated for gravel, different sediments, and has sat vacant in that disturbed state for longer than I've been alive. So currently, the underlying comprehensive plan for this area is multi-use, which corresponds with the RCP, residential, commercial, professional zoning, which I'm here requesting today. The uses surrounding it are all consistent with that zoning, and that being said, if there are any- are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Super. Counsel, any questions?
I have one. I don't intend for you to disclose to whom you're going to sell or rent this property specifically, but can you give us an idea of what you foresee the use of that will be?
Sure. So I'm one of the largest suppliers of actually affordable housing in the city with over 100 units here in Pocatello. I've purchased and tackled some of the most dilapidated, crime-ridden complexes in town. I'm positive several of you are familiar with them. What we're seeing right now on our property management side is slightly concerning. We're seeing people who would typically be above entry-level housing, right? Small families, starter families that would typically occupy single-family home rentals, townhome rentals, condo rentals, stuff like that. We're seeing them actually be pushed into our entry-level affordable housing and leaving the people that would traditionally be in the affordable housing sector without anywhere to go. And so our plan for this property, and caveated, there's a lot of engineering, there's a budget to be reckoned with and several other things, but my dream for this property would be to develop it with residential use, to be one step above entry-level housing, mid-grade housing, to allow people who are in need of affordable housing to occupy the units that are most conducive to that and provide people who are starting families and otherwise a place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds great. Thank you. Hopefully you can see that dream come true. That's, that's great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Englesey, Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. The request before you is a proposed zone map amendment to rezone 3.05 acres of land at 600 Jefferson Avenue to, from RMS to RCP. The subject property is currently undeveloped and has sat vacant for more than 10-plus years. The applicant's request to rezone the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map designation of mixed use. All those zoned currently residential, surrounding uses along Jefferson Avenue include a mix of commercial uses, multifamily, two-family, and single-family housing. The proposed RCP zoning district is intended to accommodate a mixture of land uses similar to what currently exists on Jefferson. Notice for this hearing was provided with respect to state noticing requirements. Staff has not received any public comment regarding the application and in consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment is compliant with Pocatello City Code, Section 172170. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Counsel, any questions for Jim?
Mr. Mayor, somewhere in here, and I can't, I'm trying to find it now, I saw the phrase concurrent residential and that one caught me off guard. What does that mean?
Concurrent residential?
Yeah, there was, it was zoning something concurrent residential.
It's currently zoned residential, medium-density, and the proposed zone would be RCP.
Okay. I can't find it now. Maybe I dreamed it. I'm not sure.
Is there a concurrent residential?
Nope.
That's what threw me off.
Maybe you dreamed it.
Maybe I did.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Super, Jim, before you leave, has there been any other correspondence to staff?
No.
Madam Clerk, have you had any in your office? Okay, thank you. With that, I'd look for any testimony supporting the application? Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Yes, I'll make it.
There's a sheet right there. If you could just go ahead and put your name there.
My name is Jan Wardell. I was at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting concerning this and I was told, well, it's just in the planning stages, we don't know anything, we, you know, and I, I submit that why would, if you don't know what you're going to build, why would you want it zoned otherwise, you know? So I want to know what's going to go up across the street from me and why I was told, oh, it's only in the planning stages. I mean, I realize that he just said he didn't, you know, there's engineering to do and all this and it's not a gravel pit, it's a hillside and the multi-multi occupancy is like 100 and something feet above, you know, if it was, if it was flat, they would be on the backside of the 600 block, I suppose, but it's, you know, it's not part of our neighborhood. And I just, I just have so many questions that I felt, I felt kind of blown off a little bit. Is it, I mean, Jefferson is a horribly, horribly busy street. I mean, it really is. How are you going to widen it? You know? I mean, it's, it's not a through intersection there at Cedar and that's where, you know, the 600 block ends and it starts at, I'm spacing the name of the street that's south of it.
Oh, south, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And, because it's flat at that end, but it's this big hill across the street, because I live on the corner of Jefferson and Cedar and I just, I just don't, when I pull out of my house, I have to watch people coming from north and south, but I've also got to watch out for people coming around Cedar because nobody stops. There's a stop sign there, I promise. Nobody stops. But, I mean, it's, it's, how are you going to accommodate that many cars? You figure, I mean, I, the first letter that I got from, you know, his proposal says 44 addresses. I don't know whether that meant who, the letter that I got, got sent to, how many, you know, within, what was it, 300 feet or something? I mean, there's just, there's just so many questions that just aren't, aren't answered and they concern me. And, and what about the, what about the, you know, there's flood plain there. P&amp;Z has, has written it off, you know, but, but it, all the loop, the hoops that you've got to jump through to get the federal government off your case.
Sure.
Because, and I faced that when I bought that place because I had to pay flood insurance because it, it just barely touches me.
So thank you very much and I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off.
But you got to.
Because you have a, you have a lot of questions. We only have three minutes per person to do this. So a lot of your questions, I don't think necessarily Dakota, it would be his responsibility to answer, you know, some of these things. There's the, the, no intersections and things like that, but.
Part of his proposal said how much parking is on Jefferson.
I'll give him an opportunity to explain a little bit in a minute about the, his, I mean, if he would like to, what his dream is. I think we kind of heard what that dream is.
I personally rather one-on-one.
But then if you would, if you would, write it down and email staff and staff can probably answer a number of these questions, even when it comes to parking and things like that, what, what is there?
Well, the second letter says that it was approved last time according to conditions. What are those conditions?
Thank you. And you could ask staff that also. Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Then with that, Dakota, I would invite you up if you would like to answer any of those questions that we, that were brought up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I didn't catch her name, but, or Jan.
Jan.
Jan's correct in her assessment that that's a busy road and that being said, parking is going to be paramount to any development that happens on that land and it's, it's something we intend to accommodate off-street on the property so as not to exacerbate any existing conditions there. The only other thing that I'd like to add, just to make sure the council gets to hear some good news every once in a while, is that every single department that I've worked with, within the city, it's been a real pleasure. The engineering department, the building department, planning and zoning, Mr. Englesey specifically has spent countless hours with me revising and revising and revising these site plans and trying to figure out how to make things work with me instead of throwing a ball. So I just wanted to tell you guys that your staff within the city are doing an excellent job and, you know, knock on wood, if everything goes well, I'm hopeful that we'd be able to start development sometime in June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, what, I got a question.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All we're doing tonight is approving a zoning change.
That's correct.
We're not approving any type of building plan or anything like that.
That's correct.
We're just giving you a, the capability of configuring differently than what the, the existing zoning would do. You can, you can try another alternative, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that Jan feels heard in her concerns and, and, you know, I, I don't ever want you to feel that you've been blown off or, or anything of that nature. So.
And those plans will have to be approved and everything else?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, maybe, maybe you could just sit and, and chat with her at some point, one-on-one and kind of explain to her in more detail.
Yes, yeah.
That might be, you know, you don't want to start a development when the neighbors are upset with you.
Yes, I, I agree. I actually tried to catch her at the end of the last Planning and Zoning Commission, but she had left early and then I had no way to get her contact information.
Super. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members.
With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, decide as before you had to proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cheatham?
Let me go back here. I'm trying to find that concurrent thing and I can't find it. I don't know where it went.
Well, you could make your emotions concurrent to the.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of, I got to figure out where we're at here.
Concurrent approval?
Yeah, concurrent approval. No. I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number Eight, the Zone Map Amendment at 600 Jefferson Avenue with all applicable standards as outlined by staff in the proposal.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. And Jan, if you would email, please email our staff, they can help you with that and it sounds like Dakota would be happy to sit down with you in visit. So thank you very much. We'll move to Agenda Item Nine, Final Plaid Application, Trelle Creek Townhouses, Division One Subdivision. Counsel may wish to approve a final plaid application submitted by McCormick Ranch LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying of 6.65 acres, more or less, into 64 lots. The proposed subdivision is located west of North Foothill Boulevard and north of North Gaethje Road Extension. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Council, Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Nine, the Final Plaid Application for the Trelle Creek Townhouse Division One Subdivision with all applicable standards as proposed by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Request for Deannexation, 2772 American Road. Counsel may wish to approve a request for deannex, deannexation submitted by Tyson and Angela Spencer. The subject property is located at 2772 American Road and is 37.83 acres, more or less. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions.
Mr. Mayor.
Is Tyson here? Yes?
Yeah. Could we have the applicant to speak if he'd like?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Tyson Spencer. I'm here with my wife, Angela, and we live at 2772 American Road. We own the less than 40 acres. We have a, we built a house on it and it's just our residential property. It is, lies on the county line or the, between the city and county line there. There is a member or a person who lives right east of us, owns about the same amount of acreage, about 40 acres and has a house on it and he's in the county. We just feel like that we would like to just put it in the county. We don't feel like that the city has any extra benefits compared to that gentleman next to us. We had to put in our own well, our own septic tank, we had to get our own propane tank up there. Everything kind of feels like the county already down, we can't even have a mailbox in front of our house. Post office made us put it down the road. And we also, because we're not close to any city fire hydrants, the city had us put in a pond, 100,000 gallon pond that we had to pay for and maintain ourselves. So we don't feel like that the city has that access to us either as far as fire hydrants. If there's a fire, we kind of maintain that ourselves. Do you, the road, I think, is still considered the county road, American Road. It's that roller coaster road there that's not really maintained. There's potholes all over in it. Kind of feels like a county road, not a city road. But that's what my understanding was, it was a county road, but the city is supposed to maintain it, but just like the county, we don't ever really get snowplows up through there. Anyway, what kind of questions would you have for me?
Could we ask staff to respond to those issues?
Sure.
Tom?
I think so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. American Road is a strange creature. Part of it is in the county, part of it is in the city. For the most part, the city does do the maintenance on it. The road is currently not at a city standard and so the drainage is not ideal the way it's designed and so we do struggle with issues of pavement failures there, but we do maintain it. We have spent a considerable amount of money on that and we do plow and do winter maintenance on it.
So is it, is, is the piece in front of, of the Spencer's city or county?
I believe, city.
Okay.
Like I said, it bounces back and forth in and out of the county.
So deannexation of this property would not change your maintenance schedule in that area?
Other questions for staff?
I have a question for staff, but I'm not sure if it would be for you or not, but I'll go ahead and, oops, sorry, I lost my, how it won't open. There. Under the conditions, so this is from the Planning and Development Services, so maybe it would be Brent. Thank you, Tom.
Bren McLean, Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you. The first condition is that the property owner would enter into a non-protest annexation agreement stating that if and when public infrastructure, water, and sewer become available, that they will hook into the system and annexation will occur at the city's discretion. So if we were to grant deannexation, then, but with this condition, then we would be reannexing at some point?
Yes, and, and if the sewer line extended up American Road, which I anticipate happening in probably in the next few years, we do have some development interest in the properties further north of this property for development also. And, and so it would be a, you know, if, if this condition was approved, then they would have to reannex at that point and, and hook up to those facilities. But I also wanted to point out in those conditions, Condition Three is a condition of a letter of support from Bannock County. And if you look at the, the very last page of your packet, we received a letter from the county and they do not support this deannexation. They feel it's best served in the, in the city and that this area is intended to eventually all annex into the city at some point. And based on some discussions I've had recently, I anticipate this area starting to develop here in the. here in the not-too-distant future.
And I guess that was kind of my question. And I think you said in, in the next couple of years, as far as number one, if we were to deannex now, it would be a couple of years, likely, that we'd be reannexing?
That's, that's always kind of a.
We don't know exactly.
We don't know, but I anticipate it happening soon, especially with the market the way it is. This is an area that we have had a number of people approach us with.
Development?
Development questions, and they're looking at this area, so.
Okay.
I have a question under water, sewer, and stormwater. That's probably not. Is that you?
No.
No?
Probably not. Water, sewer, stormwater.
Merrill Quell, the Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello.
So under the water, sewer, and stormwater section, the final line reads, "Any development of the property while in city limits must comply with city erosion and sediment control and stormwater management requirements." Does the county have similar requirements? Are they more?
They do.
Are they more or less stringent than ours?
They've pretty much adopted the same thing that we have.
Okay.
In fact, we share that responsibility, and we actually manage the training there and the numbers, the certification numbers and that through the City of Pocatello for the, for the county also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Okay.
Could I make another comment?
Sure, why not?
Thank you.
When we first built the house on there, the planning and zoning said that they would never be able to get water up that road because there's not enough pressure. They said that even if, if we ever wanted to subdivide any part of it in the city, they would never allow it because they couldn't get enough water pressure there. There is a subdivision that's south of us that's going in, and I've heard that they barely got enough water pressure for that. They had to put in bigger water lines to be able to get it. And then I was told that they would never get enough water pressure to make it up there. The property that's right below us, and right north of us, into the east of us, or the west of us, sorry, is all owned by ISU. So people approaching about subdividing up there, I don't, is that ISU that's approaching you? Because that's all that's surrounding us, is ISU property. It's like 40 acres north, 40 acres south, like 80 acres to the west. So I don't know where he got that information. The two properties north, north on American Road, there's the property north of is ISU-owned, another property north of that is, there's 100 acres that was being sold. And my understanding, they're selling, that's in the county, and they're selling five-acre lots, and they're going to keep it in the county. So I don't know where they'd be getting water from the city up there, and why that would be turned into a future city lot. That, that's just some concerns I have. I, so I feel that I don't think that's going to ever get developed up through there, unless ISU's planning on selling it. They've owned it for 100 years, and they haven't done anything with it. Why would they all of a sudden sell it to somebody to start turning into housing? So those are just some concerns that I have, that I don't think that two-year possibility of turning into subdivisions up there is a, is a thing. So.
Okay.
But thank you. Thank you for letting me speak again, so.
Can I ask you a question? As far as the conditions, there's three conditions that were in there. How do you feel about those conditions? Are you, are you in agreement with those, or not?
Well, yeah, if, if they ever put water pass there, that'd be, that'd be great for me if I ever decided, like, we don't have any plans for the land right now, but if in 10 years from now I wanted to subdivide, and, and the city had a water line through there and septic, I'd, I'd probably be able to subdivide smaller lots. If I did it in the county, I'd only be able to do five-acre lots. So I, I think it'd be better for me if that's a condition, if that ever happens. But I'm just saying, I don't think it's ever going to happen. And I would hope you would not make a decision on something that might happen in a couple of years that's not, just based off of, of that, that idea. But, yeah, definitely if that ever did happen, I, I wouldn't mind putting it back in there. I don't think that I should add city water to my property, now that I've already got my own well and septic tank and all that stuff. I don't know why I'd have to have that expense added to my, my already current expense of owning the home to hook into the utilities. So, and like I said, it's kind of a, a spot where there's a lot of places that own there that are already in the county, that right, right next to me. And so is that something the city would make them do also? So, but I'm just trying to be fair with that, so. Don't put that answer to your question.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I have a question for Tom.
Tom?
Tom, is that stretch of American Road a primary, secondary, or tertiary street?
That is a tertiary street. So the traffic volume counts on that are very, very low. So it's a, when we're doing snow removal, it's a third priority.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Cheetham?
After reading the packet of information that came with this, uniformly, everyone that addressed it, except for the applicant, recommended that we not approve this deannexation. The Director of Planning and Development Services at the county said that they are currently negotiating development to the north along American Road, and they anticipate funeral, future annexing to occur within the next 12 to 24 months. So with that regard, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the deannexation.
Okay. Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Cheetham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
I'm thinking.
Stevens?
Unless somebody can tell me why the annexation and deannexation is a horrifically complex, expensive situation, I feel that we should help this property owner out, and so I vote no.
Okay, thank you.
Oh.
Thank you. Then we'll move on. So, yeah, it was denied thing. Thank you for being here. We'll move to Agenda Item 11, Municipal Code 13.16.085B Annexation Request, Spencer Pulliam. Spencer Pulliam requests an exception to City Municipal Code 13.16.085 to be allowed a private septic system on a parcel less than two and a half, one-half acres located on Four Road. Spencer?
My name is Spencer Pulliam. I live on 1536 Chloe Lane. I'm here with my wife tonight, Tara Pulliam. And, and just as Mayor Blatt said, we, we are here with, hoping, hoping to get some resolution to an issue we face. First of all, I want to thank Merrill Quell. He has been extremely helpful in all the items I've brought to his attention. I didn't know Merrill beforehand. He's been very responsive in anything I've asked of him. Been fantastic at procuring information and getting us to this point here. So Merrill did a fantastic job. With that, I just bought two acres of property on Four Road. For those of you that aren't 100% familiar with it, it's below the prison, about a quarter mile, a little more, maybe, maybe closer to a half a mile. We, we do have this two-acre lot, and my wife and I are planning to build a house on this. We intend to move forward. They have electric power up there. However, they don't have water or sewer. So in, in order for us to build a house for my wife and my two daughters, we would need to have a well drilled and then have a septic system installed. The only issue with that is your, your, let me have it here. Municipal Code 13 dot 16 dot 085 dictates that in order to have both a well and a septic system, or, yeah, a well and a septic system, you have to have at least two and a half acres. Given the location of the property, it's adjacent to 297 acres of BLM to the south, and then just to the back of it. I don't, I don't own the property, but the, the bench of the west bench, or the slope of the west bench, is directly to the back. And for, for those familiar with, with that, there, there isn't a single house built on the west bench. So if you, if you look out and see, there's, there's not one there. So 297 acres to the south, to the east, we have the west bench, and we feel that under the current circumstances, the intent of this Code 13 dot 16 dot 085, while not met, to the letter of the law, the intent would be met with, with the surrounding property. So that's essentially where we're at with it.
Any questions for Spencer?
Have you received any cost estimates on what the sewer and well will cost versus bringing municipal services to your property?
I've made preliminary calls to services that would provide that, and the cost estimates just right off the top of their head are, are over $100,000 for each, and mainly because of, of the slope that would need to be maintained. It would need to be certified by engineers. It wouldn't be that the, the trench would be that difficult to get. But the certification on all the work done is, is what would drive the cost up, so.
What about the cost of putting in the sewer system and the well?
The sewer system and the well are significantly cheaper than, than the water and the sewer would be. And by significant, I mean magnitude of four to five times cheaper, so.
So, so if the, if the, if going with city services would be 100,000, then drilling a well and building a septic field would be?
Approximately 40,000. Well, it depends. And I say magnitude of four to five. The 100,000 was their, their minimum number. They said it could get expensive. So, so more along the lines of a third.
I have a question probably for city staff, but I don't know if this is the appropriate.
Is there any other questions while Spencer's here? Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
I think Merrill's on his way up, so.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know, I mean, aquifers are not endless. You know, clearly in Northgate, we've had trouble getting potable water, you know, on-site. It's going to have to be pulled up from the valley, as I understand it. So how do we, I mean, do, can just anybody put a straw in the aquifer? I mean, how, you know, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying? If.
Residential, yeah.
Yeah, if, if, if someone makes a request, which I, I mean, I don't find it unreasonable. But I do have a concern that, you know, the hydrogeologists that have been looking at our aquifer tell us that it's, you know, unique. It has some very unique features. It's not clearly understood. We have some contamination issues currently that we don't really, you know, we've had to close a well. We don't know why. So how, what kind of regulations do we have about just punching a well into the aquifer on an individual basis, and assuming that we can just do that endlessly?
As far as the city goes, if we are not able to provide water sewer, and we do not have it within the 300 feet, is what our court ordinance says, then everything falls back to the Idaho Department of Water Resources. It is another jurisdiction that, that governs the wells and takes care of the water rights and so forth. And as, as we're saying, is if they have residential lots and that, and municipal water isn't provided, they will allow these wells to be drilled.
So basically, there, I mean, it's just kind, there is no particular oversight of the aquifer itself. It's just?
Idaho Department of Water Resources is overlooking that. The state is.
Okay. And they've, they've said this is fine?
They've given a verbal, that said, yes, they would allow a well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can comment on that. I had an instance to.
Thanks, Merrill.
Dig into this a month or so ago on another issue, and IDWR has an online application. If you're for culinary uses only, anybody can apply, and it's virtually a guaranteed application. For culinary uses only for a home, not for any other application. You cannot drill an ag well or anything else with that application, but it's a simple process.
Thank you.
Rick, real quick, do you know anything about the southeastern Idaho Public Health application for a septic system?
All I looked at was IDWR.
Anybody can speak?
Merrill Quell, again, the southeastern Idaho Public Health is very similar. They'll take, if they have the place for the leach field and septic system, and then they have the secondary for secondary when one fails and so forth. And it meets the percolation rates, but I haven't seen one in our area not be permitted.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Cheetham?
I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number 11, the exception request to Municipal Code 13 dot 16 dot 085 by Spencer Pulliam to allow a private, private septic system on a parcel less than two and a half acres located on Four Road.
Second? We have a motion by Council President Cheetham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
I gotta vote no. I don't think we should be allowing any septic systems in our.
Lurick?
I just wanted to make a comment. I am very torn by this because everyone who knows me knows that water protection is one of my most important issues. And so I'm not, you know, really thrilled about the idea of allowing a septic system. But I do think that you have a compelling case for an exception here. And while I, as I said, I, I don't think that adding more septic is something that we really want to be doing, I am going to vote yes.
Ortega? Stevens?
I would have preferred that the request for the exception maybe was somehow dealt with prior to having the land purchased and so forth, kind of with the assumption that it would be possible. So I, I believe our aquifer is critical to the future of Pocatello, and I have to vote against granting this exception.
Yes. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item 12, Memorandum of Understanding MOU for Proposed Public Park, Legacy Park. Ryan Satterfield of Satterfield Realty and Development Incorporated and city staff request their authorization of the mayor's signature on a memorandum of understanding MOU for the dedication and improvements of a proposed park, public park, to be known as Legacy Park within the crest of US State's Division Four Development. Staff recommends the execution of the memorandum of understanding between Satterfield Realty and Development Incorporated and the City of Pocatello, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the proposed public park called Legacy Park, as outlined in Item Number 12, with your signature on authorization of the mayor's signature on the memorandum and subject to legal department review. All pertinent documents, I'll say.
Second, I'd like to hear from Mr. Satterfield before we.
Ryan?
Yes. And thank you.
My question, Ryan, is, does this MOU materially reflect what you intended when you brought this to us last October?
Yeah. Good evening, Ryan Satterfield, Satterfield Realty and Development. The answer to that is yes. We sat down, had a couple of meetings, a little bit of back and forth, and overall, we have the same goal, I feel, between what staff sees this being and what we see this being. And so we're excited about it and look forward to.
One of your concerns, I remember last October, was the city doing something quick enough with this property. Does this, does this accomplish what you wanted?
Yes, I feel it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Annual Trade and Purchase of Handguns Police Department. Council may wish to consider the police department's recommendation and, and accept a quote from Salt Lake Wholesale, blue labeled Glock dealer for law enforcement for the following firearms to be used by members of the Pocatello Police Department. A, trade in 11 Old Glock 21s, one Old Glock 30, and two Old Glock A, trade in 11 Old Glock 21s, 1 Old Glock 30, and 2 Old Glock 17 firearms, and if approved, B, purchase 16 new Glock 17 MOS handguns and 2 Glock MOS 19 MOS handguns. Staff can purchase the new Glock handguns at a discounted rate of $274.88 per gun. The total purchase price will be $4,948. Funds are available in the police department's fiscal year 2022 budget. Councilman Bray? Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this annual trade and purchase of handguns, particularly as listed as trade-in and purchase.
I have a question, if possible.
Second? Let's get a second before we go there. We got a second by Cheetum and a question.
Captain McCall's, Pocatello Police Department.
So two questions. One, in terms of the trading in, is there a reason that we're increasing the number of firearms used such as to accommodate increased staff?
We've had some retirements, and when people retire, we provide them with their duty handgun when they leave.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. Is this the last of the move to 9mm from 45s?
It is not.
There's still some 45s. The chief's still carrying his, is that?
Yeah.
These are MOS guns, so do you anticipate the purchase of reflex sites to go on those?
Well, in the future, we're hoping to. At this point, it's optional. If officers want them, they can purchase their own.
What about holsters?
They have to purchase those and go with them as well.
So these are nines. Will the 45 holsters fit the 9mm?
Well, they will, but not to our standard.
Not retention?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Surplus and Sale of Seized Asset Request Police Department. Council may wish to accept the following requests from the Pocatello Police Department, subject to legal department review. A, declare three vehicles as surplus which were seized during ongoing investigations. The vehicles have been adjudicated and awarded to the police department by Bannock County Prosecutor's Office in accordance with asset forfeiture laws. B, declare one vehicle as surplus that was purchased with narcotic funds and has been used by the narcotics unit for several years. Sorry. And C, authorize the sale of vehicles through auction and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents. We need to move past this one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number 14, the surplus and sale of the seized assets from the police department, three vehicles as surplus that were seized during ongoing investigations, and the vehicle that is surplus from the narcotics purchase, and authorize the sale of those items through auction after authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents and legal department review.
Second?
You had a hard time too.
I wanted to say it, I really did.
So we have a motion by Council President Cheetum and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15, Fiscal Year 2022 Program of Projects Transit. Council may wish to approve the 2022 operating and capital program projects for transit urban and rural services and authorize the mayor and city attorney to pin the grant certifications, 5307, and authorize the public transit director to make necessary amendments to the, and modifications related to the grants as required, subject to legal department review for the following. A, Federal Transit Administration Urban Grant 5307 in the amount of $1,204,232 for fiscal year 2022 with a local share of $687,382. Local share is available in the fiscal year 2022 public transit budget. And B, Federal Transit Administration Rural Idaho Transportation Department Grant 5311 in the amount of $737,014 and $320,405 for fiscal year 2022. No city funds are used for the rural program. Councilman Bray? Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022 program of projects in transit with concern given to all the information we've been provided under Agenda Item 15. Second? We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 16, Public Transit Intelligent Transportation Systems, ITS Agreement and Award. Council may wish to authorize execution of an Intelligent Transportation System, ITS Agreement, and Notice of Award between City and Trapeze Software Group Incorporated DBA TripSpark, and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to legal department review. All pertinent documents. This is a one-time project in the amount of $442,707 with an annual software maintenance fee of $40,678, starting with fiscal year 2023. The one-time project amount is provided by 100% federally funded CARES Act grant and does not require local match. Councilmember Mansfield?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the execution of an Intelligent Transportation Systems Agreement and Notice of Award between City and Trapeze Software Group and authorize you to sign, subject to legal department review, all pertinent documents.
Second?
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick.
I have a question.
We have a question?
Yes. For our transit, there's a $40,000 ongoing maintenance program. Is that similar to what you're paying now for your current system?
It is. Right now, we're paying close, sorry, Skyler Beebe, Public Transit Director. Right now, we're paying close to $30,000, but that's only for our paratransit side. Previously, a few years ago, we had it on our fixed drought side, but it was not, it just was not functional and it was not benefiting us, and so we discontinued it. So we've maintained that budget in the anticipation that we'd be able to, at one point, bring the ITS back in and bring the whole system back into play.
So this will do all of the various local services?
Yes, this will cover system-wide, all seven counties, all the City of Pocatello.
Or rural, too, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 17 is items from the audience. Nobody has signed up to speak here, so with that, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We are adjourned.